Order of the Board of Education and the Mount Healthy City School District, August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. This is a meeting of the Board of Education in public. It is not to be considered a public meeting. Could we have a call to order? Anna?
I have a roll call from you.
Thank you. Mrs. Anderson?
Present.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Present.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
And Dr. Turner?
Here.
Want to stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to go into executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. Could I have a motion to?
Second.
All right. Anybody got any questions? Okay, can we have roll call?
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
This is the old one. Anderson, Anderson. I know. Here we go, just a second.
What happened?
That's okay. I didn't catch it. Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to come back from executive session at six-twenty. All right. All the board members that've had a chance to look at the agenda, is there any additions, corrections, or anything? Okay. Can I get a motion to accept the agenda then?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, sorry. Either one.
Either one.
With the adjustment to the wording on page thirteen, item B, we're going to adjust that to approve the salary increase. That'll be the wording change there. And yes, instead of the percent. And yours stays the same.
That should be to prove and an increase in salary for the treasurer.
Yes.
Should be and. The percentage shouldn't be there. Okay. All right. If there are no other corrections, can we get a roll call, please?
Miss Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
The board has had a chance to read the minutes from the prior meeting. Is there any additions, corrections, or anything? Okay. Hearing none, could I get a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Any questions? Could we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Special orders? Anything from the Mount Healthy Teachers Association?
No.
Okay, there's any communications, announcements?
No.
Oh, gosh. All right, then, the next thing is the Great Oaks Board Meeting. And where did I have that? Carol. Okay. I know I got one here because, okay, the Ohio ACTE Innovation and Impact Conference, Dennis Hoag was awarded the Career Tech Teacher of the Year Award at the Ohio ACTE Innovation and Impact Conference in July, and me, I was named outstanding board member. It was fun. Okay, Lieutenant Governor John Houston addressed the attendings on partnering with CTE to move the state forward to a bright future. Great Oaks staff members Sarah Taylor and Jim Hansel gave an insightful and well-received presentation on Explore, Discover, and Start. Their publication provides introduction and guidance to eighth graders on encouraging them to begin to explore their future careers and interests. New staff members, thirty-two new Great Oaks team members attended orientation and training on August the second and third. All in all, we had over seventy position changes to accommodate twenty-two retirees, internal movement opportunities, and program expansion and new hires. Staff opening day, opening day for satellite instructors, district office staff, and adult ed staff took place beginning last week at Diamond, Laurel, and Scarlet, and they took place on Wednesday, eight-ten, and we received our district's purpose, goals, values, and strategies for twenty-two, twenty-three. The highlight was recognizing seventy-three team members from across the district with their Great Oaks Heritage Rewards. These service milestones range from five to thirty years of contributing to our students' success. Due to construction, Live Oaks Opening Day is scheduled for August seventeenth. CHIP Act, Intel, and Ohio. In July, Intel Vice President and Factory Manager Jim Evers, along with Intel colleagues and representatives from Jobs Ohio, visited the Ramtech Lab at Scarlet Oaks and talked about workforce needs from construction to factory operations to the statewide supply chain. He acknowledged the integral role Career Tech will play in meeting those needs. In line with those discussions, the CHIP Act made its way through Congress in late July with bipartisan support, passed, and was recently signed into law by President Biden. This legislation provides fifty-two billion in funding for U.S. companies producing computer chips and offers a tax credit for investment in chips manufacturing. It also provides funding to spur the innovation and development of other U.S. technologies. Intel is investing more than twenty billion in the construction of two leading-edge chip factories in Ohio. Our Treasurer CFO search update, interviews took place last weekend and continue into this weekend as candidates are evaluated for the Treasurer CFO position. The goal is to have an individual hired within a month of overlap for onboarding with current CFO Ben Van Horn before he retires in January. That's the end of my report. Okay, legislation, you got anything?
I do not have one. They don't seem to be doing anything. I guess they're still on their summer recess.
Okay, then we'll go on with the report of the treasurer.
Do you want to go ahead and have a? Okay. Item A is a recommendation to accept the schedule of bills for June twenty-twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Item B is a recommendation to accept the financial statements for June twenty-twenty-two.
So moved.
Second. Anyone have any questions? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have.
That's what you have. Okay, well, then go on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. So tonight, we have a special treat for everyone. We have Celine Quinn with us, and Celine has been involved in creating a performance poetry group at Mount Healthy. And we actually, I didn't, but they went to the Ohio State Fair. And so I'd like to introduce Celine, and she will introduce her students, and they have something they would like to share with you.
Well, good evening to the board. Celine is here.
Here, I have one. I have one.
Okay. I'm over here.
So they can very well watch you.
Okay, good evening to the board and to all the guests who are here to hear poetry. We are hot off the Ohio State Fair. We were invited to participate by the Ohio Arts Council, and these two students currently will be in eleventh grade, and they are, they have practiced during the summer coming into school on their own time to get ready for this year's Poetry Out Loud competition and also for the City Poetry Slam. So we went to the fair ten days ago and did perform there, and I want to just give you a little tinge of a background of what Poetry Out Loud is in form of competition. Poetry Out Loud, I personally never had any respect for that competition, and now I see it through, over time, how hard and difficult it is to interpret the words of another poet who you actually have never met and know basically not a lot about. So there are website poems cited to choose from, and you have to choose from there. And as it goes from school competition, one poem, regional, two poems, state, three poems, and then it goes on to national, and there's a twenty thousand dollar cash prize for the win. So it is serious work. And right now, with Chi Chi and Anna Devant, we have two contenders for Poetry Out Loud, and we currently hold the position of second in the state of Ohio with another student who will be a senior. So when you see a student perform, all poems must be memorized even into your third and then on to the national competition. And no gestures, no prompts, the only things you can really use are your eyes and your voice. So I'm going to introduce Adriana Devant, who's going into eleventh grade, and I'll hand her the mic. And I just want to say basically that the ASCD has chosen the word elevate for this year to honor all teachers who will be elevating students. And we would just like to dedicate this performance tonight to all the teachers in the district, or their open houses, or preparing for classes, and say that we know that you're out there and that you're going to be listening to the words of our students all year long to elevate them.
Barter. Barter by Sarah Teasdale. Life has loveliness to sell. Life, I'm so sorry. Life has loveliness to sell. All beautiful and splendid things. Blue wave, white on a shore. Soaring fire that sways and sings. And children's faces looking up, holding wonder like a cup. Life has loveliness to sell. Music like a curve of gold, a scent of pine trees in the rain. Eyes that love you, arms that hold. And for your spirits? And for your spirits, still, I'm so sorry. And for your spirits, still delight, a holy thought that starts tonight. Spend all your love, spend all your time on loveliness. Count it and never, I'm so sorry. Buy it and never count the cost. And for that one white singing hour of peace, many a year of spiteful loss. And for, and for that breath of ecstasy, give all you have been and could be.
You can see how it's so difficult. It is so difficult, and, and thank you for your support. I'm going to introduce Chi Chi, and she is going to come up. I'll hand you the mic. And this Chi Chi has.
The Mother in Blackness by Maya Angelou. She came home running, back into the mothering blackness, deep into the smothering blackness. White tears, icicle, gold plains of her face. She came home running. She came down creeping, here to the black arms waiting, now to the warm heart waiting. Alien dreams that would frost her rich brown face. She came down creeping. She came home blameless. Black as yet was Hager's daughter, as tall as was Shiba's daughter. Threats of the northern winds die on the desert's face. She came home blameless.
Thank you all for having us tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn. Thank you both. That was amazing. Let's just give the students another round of. You guys did a great job. That's so difficult to stand up in front of people, and you did an amazing job. So, you know, we appreciate that Ms. Quinn has brought performance poetry to our high school and actually is working with the other levels of school as well. And, you know, one thing that we are really working on is letting our students know that they have a voice. And so this gives a way for them to express and showcase their talents. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So on Friday night, we had our back-to-school event, and I just want to thank all the board that had the opportunity to come. And I especially want to thank Heather. Heather is here with us tonight, Heather Bakar. If you don't know, Heather is over our transportation, and we have been partnering with them to really have great communication in the district. And Heather, you know, some of our students don't know how to get on the bus and how to use the bus, so they actually brought a small bus over to our event, was there showing them how to load the bus, how to use Wi-Fi on the bus, answer questions about bus passes, and just, you know, increase that communication between parents and our, and our staff. Her staff is lovely. They even grilled hot dogs for us, and they were delicious. I had one. So we did just especially want to thank Heather and her whole team for everything that they did. You had two. They were good. They were good. The one I had was delicious. Today, we welcome back our staff to the district, and we had Julie, Kim, and Carol were able to join us this morning. It was a wonderful celebration, everyone coming back. And we, our theme this year is hashtag worthy. We have a video that Michael Burdette put together that we will be putting on our website for people to watch, but we're so happy to have all of our staff back. Our students will return on Wednesday. That will be their first day. So we're excited to get back into the swing of the new school year. Under informational items, item A are the grants that we have received since the last board meeting. We received twelve hundred and fifty dollars for the Mount Healthy Band Music in the Park Competition for eighth grade, twelve hundred and fifty dollars for the Band Music in the Park Competition for seventh grade, twelve hundred and fifty dollars for the Mount Healthy High School Baking and Pastry Expert Training, twelve hundred and fifty dollars for the culinary students. And we received a large grant, this is fantastic for us, two hundred thousand dollars, and this is targeted for our students that deal with homelessness. So that gives us some extra resources to help them in that transition time while they are looking for more secure housing. We also received a school safety program grant for the Early Learning Center for fifty thousand dollars, and we received one as well for the high school for fifty thousand dollars, and a grant for the Educator Rising for ten thousand dollars. So I really appreciate all of the work that our grant writers have been doing to bring in these extra resources for our students. The culinary program was just awarded a pre-apprenticeship program partnership with Hawking College. This is huge. So we are so excited about this opportunity. This is another step towards our students, once the facilities are built, they will be able to earn their certifications that they need to be successful in the field. And, you know, we're about giving our students opportunities. That, the area of culinary is the area that our students through surveys have expressed that they are the most interested in, and so we want to provide them the opportunity to grow in that career. And even if they choose not to stay in that career, it can give them a way of earning a great income while they pursue other types of things. Yes. You know, yeah, yeah. Cooking, anything related to cooking was the top one, but some of the other types of things that they really would like to see are more arts classes, very hands-on art classes. We do have ceramics, but they would like an expansion of the programs where they could do more focused artwork. Hand-thrown pottery was a very popular one that they would like. They also would like an ROTC program, and we have been investigating that. We actually were approved for an ROTC program, but the funding was cut. So we are on the waiting list, but the ROTC was the third. Those are the three things that they wanted the most. We, I wanted to bring the discussion of school fees. The last few years, we have decided because of the pandemic not to have school fees. At the preschool level, we have in the past, not since I've been here, but previously, charged fees if they were attending preschool. The last few years, we have not charged those fees, but the board as a whole, this is something we wanted to discuss, is to decide how we wanted to proceed for this year.
We have not been doing it?
We have not. During COVID and the pandemic, we, we have not been charging any fees for preschool, and we have not been charging any fees for our students. The only thing they would be charged for would be, for instance, if they lost a book. You know, they had a book and they lost it, if they damaged a computer on purpose, things like that. But the general fees, we have not been charging.
So what have we normally been charging?
For preschool?
They were forty dollars a month at one time. That's been two or three years ago.
Right.
Excuse me. And then our general fees used to be twenty-five dollars. And they do also have to pay if they take a specialty class.
True.
I think we stopped doing the general fees like four or five years ago. That was well before COVID, I think. Becky's looking doubtful.
That sounds good.
I thought we did. I, I thought we did when Dr. Cosby was still here.
Yeah, but a few months and everything going on, I had no problem. Just suspend it for another year.
Okay. Great. Is everybody in agreement with that? Ms. Bryant?
So not bring it back up until twenty-three, twenty-four?
Does the board need to take a vote on that? Do they need to vote?
Well, we did in the last two years.
Okay, thank you. Our graduation ceremony has been set. It will be May twenty-third at six P.M. at the Fifth Third Arena on the University of Cincinnati campus, the same location that we had last year. So we are excited about that, and, you know, that seems far away, but it will be here before we know it. Friday night, we have our first official home football game. Last Friday, we had a scrimmage. Ms. Bryant was able to cheer on our Owls. But this week, we're going to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the AED device, and that will be right before the game. So if you would like to come and be part of that, it's at six-thirty, I believe, six-thirty. And then we will have the game right after that against the Little Miami Panthers. So if you would like to come out, come on out and cheer on our Owls. They did win the scrimmage last week.
Okay, let me, what was the date on that again?
The nineteenth.
Of August?
Of August, this coming Friday.
Oh, okay. Good day. What time?
Six-thirty for the ribbon-cutting, and then the game will start at seven, right after.
Just want to write it down because I'll forget.
Okay. This year, our expulsion officers for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year will be Dr. Sarah Richter, and the backup will be Dr. Sarah Wilson. For this next school year, the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, our five-oh-four compliance officer will be Dr. Sarah Wilson. The Title IX Anti-Harassment Compliance Officers for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year will be Dr. Charles Ogden and Jaina Wolf. Any questions on any of the informational items? Great. Item B is the recommendation to approve the Mount Healthy High School Handbook for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Can we get a motion? So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Can we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C is the recommendation to approve the Mount Healthy Junior High School Student Handbook for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item D is the recommendation to approve the Elementary Parent Student Handbook for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Can we get a?
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item E is the recommendation that the Mount Healthy City School District participate in the Student Teacher Observer Programs of the University of Cincinnati, Xavier University, Mount St. Joe, Miami University, Cincinnati Christian University, Antioch College, Wright State University, Eastern Michigan University, Franklin University, and Grand Canyon University during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Can we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item F is the recommendation that Mount Healthy City School District participate in the Educational Affiliation Agreement with the University of Cincinnati College of Nursing to provide clinical experiences for nursing students during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Get roll call, please.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item G is the recommendation to renew IREDDI from curriculum associates for online reading and math instruction for students. This includes gifted identification, third-grade reading, alternative tests, universal screener for K through twelve, K through three diagnostic testing for state reporting. The total cost is sixty thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents.
Can we get a motion, please? So moved.
Second.
Who said it?
Uh, Mrs. Anderson.
Mrs. Anderson. I'm not hearing well. Okay. Y'all have any questions? You have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item H is recommendation to enter into a service agreement with Hamilton County and Educational Service Center for a middle school adolescent literacy coach for the 22-23 school year. The total cost is $48,960. And this is paid with grant funds. CLSD is one of our grants.
Any questions? Roll call please.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item I is the recommendation to enter in a service agreement with Hamilton County Educational Service Center for a high school literacy coach for the 22-23 school year. The total cost, $24,500.
Can we have a motion, please? Second. Is there any questions?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item J is the recommendation to enter into a service agreement with Hamilton County Educational Service Center for an elementary literacy coach for the 22-23 school year. The total cost is $76,679. This is paid with the CLSD grant funds.
Can we have a motion, please?
Take a pic.
Any questions? Can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item K is the recommendation to enter into a service agreement with Hamilton County Educational Service Center for an elementary math coach for the 22-23 school year. The total cost, $50,879.
Any questions? I got one. Are all these coaches coming over at different times? I'm trying to find out. Okay, these people come over if, if a teacher has recommended somebody for the coaching or is this just something they do?
It's something they do. They're, they're in our school. Jaina, you want to give a more detail on that?
Thank you.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item L is the recommendation to accept the following donation to Mount Healthy Athletic Department for the football team, $500 from Wedbush Securities.
Any questions?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item M is the recommendation to adopt a resolution authorizing in lieu of transportation pay for the 22-23 school year.
Second.
Any questions? Can we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item N is the recommendation to adopt the new guidelines and procedures for the Culinary Arts Program. And I wanted to just talk a little bit about this. There was an attachment sent. As we have the higher level classes of culinary, there will be times when some alcohol will need to be used in recipes. For instance, to flambé. If there is a situation, this policy states that the teacher would get the item. It would be under lock and key. They would take it to the student and put that ingredient into the recipe when needed. But alcohol is not a typical thing that you have at a high school. So I wanted to bring this before the board. If we are going to pursue the higher level culinary certification, it is expected that they would use alcohol in some level, at the higher level, in some recipes. You can come over anytime and sample the food.
Okay, can we get a motion?
Second.
Y'all have any questions? Okay. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item O is the consent agenda. Part of the consent agenda covers different stipends as well as a few salary extended time, people that we have hired and people that did resign. Local, it's local.
Okay, can we get a motion?
So moved. Second.
You have any questions? Can we get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
And that's the end of my report.
Okay. Then, is there anything we want to discuss? No, okay. Okay, on the, the other agenda items is a motion to approve the contract for Dr. Valerie Hawkins as Superintendent of the Mount Healthy City School District effective August the 1st, 2022 to July the 31st, 2027. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Anyone have any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay, the next motion is to approve, approve an increase in salary for the treasurer, Rebecca Brooks, for 2022-2023 school year. Could I have a motion?
Did you say no?
Okay, who's doing what?
Ms. Bryant.
I thought I missed some. Okay. Any questions? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay, the next is a motion to appoint a delegate in alternate to the Delegate Assembly of the House School Boards Association Capitol Conference in Columbus, Sunday, November the 13th through Tuesday, November the 15th.
I nominate Mrs. Ellis to be the delegate.
Okay, I'll accept. Who we gonna do for alternate? You and Bo, Julie?
I'm gonna go. I hate those business meetings, though. Those are torture.
I'll go. I'll be in there. I, I wouldn't do that to you.
All right.
I have witnesses. Hey, unless something happens, I will be there. Okay, can we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay. And I know you don't have no questions. Can we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay. The next motion is to appoint Carol Ellis as the Mount Healthy City School District Representative on the Great Oaks Career Campus Board.
So moved. Second.
You got any questions? Okay. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.